Well, welcome to the City of Iowa City Work Session for March 7, 2023. It is 4:00 PM and we have some interesting things on our agenda that we've been waiting for. Item one is the Johnson County Child Care Wage Supplement Program presentation. And there are a slew of partners that will be presenting today. And so I'll have you all introduce yourselves, but I think we're going to be starting with Jennifer. Jennifer Banta, welcome.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate your time and attention for this wage enhancement program. So I wanted to start out, I know that I've spoken to some of you in the past at the joint meeting, but I wanted to start out with giving you a little bit of history about the Child Care Coalition. So in 2019, a group of 65 of us gathered in Merge, that was pre-COVID, where we felt comfortable being 65 in Merge. But we came together to discuss how we could increase access to high-quality, affordable childcare. And really, when I put out the call for this meeting, I thought maybe 10, 15 folks would show up. We packed the room and we had so many folks there from the childcare industry. We had government officials, we had concerned citizens, parents, and so we were all focused on finding solutions to the childcare problem. Well, you all know what happened next. A few short months later, COVID hit, the pandemic hit, and we had to pivot. And what we did during that pivot was we started meeting weekly. Megan was part of those calls, the school district, childcare providers. We all started meeting to discuss what the major issues of the day were. Sometimes it was finding whole milk, sometimes it was finding masks or disinfectant. But what really came out of those meetings was that we really started to build trust. And there were a lot of people at the table, a lot of different groups at the table, that were all focused on how can we support working families and children during this time. So in the summer of 2021, we got back together at Open Heartland to discuss what our next steps could be and where we should focus our energy. And at that meeting, we really decided that we needed to focus on building up that childcare workforce. So we wanted to also strengthen our business partnerships and investment from the business community. And we wanted to build that pipeline of childcare workers and childcare entrepreneurs and really promote the early education industry as a valued profession. And I think at the end of the day, what we decided was that to do all of those things, what we needed to focus on was increasing wages of our childcare workforce. And you'll hear later some of the really staggering statistics around what the childcare workforce currently makes and how it's not really a living wage in any stretch of the imagination. So that's why we decided to focus on that. So I have a group of amazing coalition builders behind me. They are all individually a force to be reckoned with. So bringing them all together to focus their energy and attention on this has really been one of the major joys of my career so far. So we have Missy Forbes from Forests who worked hard to develop an earn and learn program for English language learners in partnership with Kirkwood Community College. She also worked with Kirkwood on developing a high school childcare development academy with the Iowa City School District. Lynette Jacoby and Lori Nash from the Johnson County Social Services worked alongside Sam Turnbell from Johnson County Empowerment to survey 43 childcare centers and gather valuable information that helped us inform this project. And you'll be hearing from her, from Lynette, later about that. At the end of the day, we came to realize that we really needed to focus on increasing wages for our childcare workers, but we didn't know how that would be financially sustainable. So Jaclyn Flegel from the City of Iowa City helped us work on those financial models to really calculate out and do the math, which is not my strong suit, and figure out how we can make this project sustainable for the long term. And then, of course, we had Shelley Mahary, who is hosting the fund through the Community Foundation and has given us the support we need to develop that fund. And then Lisa Williams from the School Board, who is focused on wraparound care for our preschoolers, which is also a very important project. And then lastly, Katie Gerlach, who joined the team to, from Better Together 2030, to help kind of project manage and then continue the fundraising process for us. So I'm excited for you all to hear about the wage enhancement program and the incredible collaboration, community collaboration that has really gotten this project launched. And I know that this awesome group of women, we've all felt the sting of childcare in our past, and we feel very committed individually and as a group to address this issue for working families in the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lynette Jacoby, so she can tell you more about the data that she collected.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us today. So I have the task of talking with you about the data, which can sometimes be a yawn-er, right? But this is some really compelling information. And the one thing about the data behind childcare is that it's there. We have a lot of raw data that helps make our point for us. The data really speaks for itself in terms of need, our need for quality, accessible, and affordable care in our community. I want to talk to you a little bit about the specific data points for Johnson County. In Johnson County, we know that 73% of all families with children under the age of six have all parents in the workforce. The state of Iowa consistently is a leader in the nation in terms of having all parents in the workforce. We also know that we have over 22,000 children in Johnson County under the age of 12, yet we only have a mere 9,000 and some change of childcare spaces available to serve those children. We continue to see a slide in the number of slots available. So last year alone, we lost over 400 childcare slots in Johnson County, which was a 12%, and we had a 12% decrease in childcare programs within the last five years. The good news behind that, if you can find good news, is that slide is slowing down. Just in 2014 to 2019, there were a decrease of 24% loss in childcare centers during that five-year period. So we have seen a slowing, but unfortunately, it continues to decline. We also, whoops, here we go. We also know that childcare professionals are the lowest-paid workers of any track profession. And keeping in mind, this data is specific to Johnson County. So Johnson County childcare workers make, on average, $11.16 per hour, just around $23,000 annually in Johnson County. So the cost of care in Johnson County is the highest in the state of Iowa. It's 32% higher than the state average of $214. In Johnson County, that cost of care is just over $282 a week for a total of $14,705. So the impact on a family in Johnson County, a family earning medium, the area median income, which is around $100,000, would spend about 15% of their income to cover care for one child, an infant. So you can imagine what that would, what that percent of their income would be if they had two children, or if they are a lower-income family earning much less than the area median income. It almost puts childcare, or does put childcare, out of reach for many households. Just in the last year, infant care increased 11% in Johnson County and 19% over the last five years. We know that affordable care is considered no more than 7% of a household income. So we certainly are far beyond that. So as, if we look at the cost of childcare for a family of two or two children, if there was an infant and a toddler in the home, the weekly cost of care, or monthly cost of care would be just over $2,000 for an annual cost of over $26,000. This is two and a half times the cost of college tuition for resident in-state tuition at the University of Iowa. So as we began to address this at the county and looked at utilizing our ARPA funds and investing in the childcare crisis within our community, we thought it was really critical that we surveyed childcare centers and speak with directors to obtain feedback on what they saw as the biggest needs, and also to get some current information on the state of care in terms of availability, who the centers were serving, how many staff openings they had, how many classrooms were closed due to insufficient staff, how many centers were accepting state childcare assistance, to what degree were they accepting state childcare assistance. So we launched into a pretty lengthy survey with these childcare centers to gather all that information to make sure that we were making the most meaningful investment with our one-time ARPA funds. So Lori Nash is going to share with you the outcome of our survey and the results that we gathered through that process.
All right, thank you. So I also have data, and I'm going to try to spice it up a little bit, but it's data. So we identified, we looked at the Department of Human Services and identified all of the licensed childcare in Johnson County. We took out 30 before-and-after-school-only programs because those are only offered before and after school for school-age kids, and we know that infant care is a huge need. So that left us with 52 licensed childcare programs in Johnson County. We called every single one of them, and we were able to speak with 42 out of the 52. So we had a pretty good rate. We had 81% of the programs that we actually spoke with. We had 43 questions that we asked, and our interviews averaged about 30 minutes, with some of them being, you know, 15 and some of them being over an hour long. We found that doing the interviews in person helped us to clarify questions and also allowed them to ask us questions. So we feel like we got really good data because we were able to clarify and make sure that we were being consistent with all of the folks that we spoke with. So what we found, and I know that when this changed fonts, we got a little funky here. What we found was that of the programs that we surveyed, they have the capacity for 4,254 students, kids. And that ranged from very small centers that have a licensed capacity of 20 up to large centers with a licensed capacity of 297. So there's a lot of variety in what type of childcare is available. When we pulled out preschool-only, so just, you know, two and a half, three hours a day, that left us with a full-time capacity of just over 4,000 slots. Now, when we look at how childcare centers operate, not all of them want to enroll up to their full licensed capacity. I kind of liken it to when we applied for a mortgage, they said, "You're eligible for this much of a mortgage." And we said, "We can't afford that much," right? So this is what we say we can do. And that's what these programs have had to do. They've had to say, "You know, I know legally we're licensed for this much, but that's not what we're able to do and still provide high-quality care." So we looked then at how many slots were filled and what is their idea of being full at what point. So what we found was that, in total, including preschool, there were 2,949 slots that were available for full-time care, or for all care. Full-time was 2,797 filled slots. In addition, there were 1,240 open slots. There are lots of reasons that slots are open, and we'll kind of talk about that a little bit. The difference between all of the slots and just full-time is just 217 slots, so it's not a huge, huge difference. We have waitlists, and those are a little much. We have, of the total 42 programs, over 1,800 students on a waitlist. Now, families might be on a waitlist at more than one center. So that does not necessarily mean that we have that many actual children, but that is getting close to the need. That's how many our waitlist is. Of those, five programs have waitlists of 100 students or more. Those five programs account for just over $1,100, or 1,100 students on that waitlist. We had 30 programs that had waitlists of less than 100, totaling 699. So again, we've got some really big centers with really big waiting lists, and we have some other smaller programs. So what we see here then is the shortage. This looks at full-time slots, ooh. This looks at full-time slots. So right now, we have 1,240 open slots in our childcare. We have a waitlist of 858. What we found is that if we look at the open slots and the available slots, we actually have 618 too-few slots in the community to serve families. So on the bottom, if we filled all the empty slots, that would be 1,240. There's still 618 that would not be able to participate because there aren't slots. Part of the reason that slots are open is because there are over 100 full-time staff openings in these 42 childcare centers in Johnson County, and another 66 part-time staff openings. So that's a lot of staff that programs are waiting for. And as you know, childcare works off of ratios. So if you don't have a staff in the room, you have to have fewer children. The fewer staff, the fewer children you're able to serve. So I'm going to try to talk through this one now. If all of the current empty slots are filled, it leaves us with a waitlist of 618 kids. However, some of those 1,240 can't be filled because we don't have enough staff. So if we look at our actual capacity right now, we have the capacity to serve 710 kids, which leaves 1,148 not served. So even filling all of those empty positions isn't going to address the entire waitlist, but it sure makes a big difference. As Lynette and Jenny alluded to earlier, wages in childcare are low. We looked at average wages for classroom assistants, associates, and then for lead classroom teachers. At the top, you can see starting average and maximum, and then at the bottom, you can see the wage ranges. So starting wage for a classroom associate is anywhere from $10 an hour to $15.75 an When you look at the maximum range for a lead classroom teacher, that goes all the way from $11 an hour to $35 an hour. Now, that $35 an hour seems like a whole lot, but it's important to note, well, relatively speaking, right? But it's important to note that most of those classroom teachers, if not all, who are making a greater wage are also the center director. And so many programs, the center director is also a classroom teacher because they're short-staffed and have to have them in the classroom. We asked whether or not programs had raised their wages in the past year because we know that many programs did as a result of the pandemic and inability to keep staff. 35 of the centers had raised their starting wages in the past year. It averaged about $1.48 an hour were those raises. The increases were anywhere from $0.50 an hour to $4 an hour. For those who did it, who gave us that information, others said they increased it anywhere from 8% to 12%. So there were already increases, and we still had a great staff shortage. Most of the programs just couldn't afford to do additional increases. So then, let's think about tuition, because Lynette talked about that a little bit. You can see here, infant tuition is greater than a four- or five-year-old. Some programs bill weekly, some programs bill monthly. That's why there are two charts on here. But weekly average is pretty high for an infant. For those billed weekly, it's $293.22 a week. For those billed monthly, it's just over $1,200 a month. That is not very attainable for many folks in our community. And if you think about individuals who themselves are making $15 an hour at Target or, you know, $18 an hour in some of the other better-paying jobs that we have, this is just not attainable. Some families are eligible for childcare assistance, and the state just increased eligibility for childcare assistance. So on March 1 of this year, eligibility increased from 145% of the federal poverty level to 155% of the federal poverty level. And I had my data. I will tell you what that means for a family of four. I had that and I don't. The childcare reimbursement rates do not get to what we need in order to pay the programs that are in our community. So, for example, for a regular childcare center who is not in a quality demonstration program, they would be reimbursed $232.10 a week. And this is an increase that just happened March 1. So we're really excited about it. The rates went up, but it's still less than what the market rate is for childcare in Johnson County. And then if you want to look at high-quality childcare, so programs that are in the quality rating system at a level five, they're getting higher reimbursement, up to $240 a week. However, they're usually the ones that cost more as well. And there's not necessarily a correlation between cost of care and quality of care, but there is some expense involved in being part of a quality demonstration program. One of the things that we know is that children in families with lower incomes do much better in higher-quality programs. All kids do better in higher-quality programs, but for children of lower incomes, the difference is much more noticeable. For those kids, there's a big difference in the outcomes in learning social-emotional skills and in being ready for kindergarten.
All right, can I interrupt just for a moment, ask a question? I'm trying to go back in my memory, and isn't it true that with the child cares that do take CCA, that they cannot, and that there's still a gap in the reimbursement cost between what they're getting from the state and then what their operating cost is, or what they're charging for the week? They cannot pass that on to their full paying, right? So they're absorbing that cost? Is that correct?
So that just changed?
Oh, it also changed.
July 1 of 2022?
Okay.
There was new legislation that does allow childcare centers to pass on some of that cost to families. Most of the childcare centers that we surveyed said they were not planning on doing that because they recognize that if families could afford to pay childcare in the first place, they probably were not eligible for childcare assistance. And that it's a burden on families and makes it really difficult. We did ask about that, and we asked about plans to do that. As we get into our program a little bit, there'll be additional opportunities to talk about that, but that is one of the things that we are trying to avoid. So when we talk about our wage incentive program, it's for programs that are not passing those costs on to families.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So when we look in Johnson County, we have 32 centers that accept childcare assistance, so 32 out of the 42 that we spoke with. Of those, 16 have caps on the amount of childcare assistance, the number of students with childcare assistance who they will provide services to. The caps go from anywhere from one student per classroom. Some of the programs only offer childcare assistance for the staff who work at that childcare center. And some of them will have higher caps, especially if they have access to other state, city, and federal funding. The highest cap that we heard was 30%, but that is a program that had a lot of access. Some programs don't have a formal cap, but they said they kind of keep an eye on it. You know, they manage it as they go. But a very real issue is that it is hard to find childcare for children on state childcare assistance. And we have enough of a demand in our community that if a center does not want to do that, they can usually still be pretty full. So one of the things that we're trying to do is also incentivize programs to take more kids on childcare assistance. All right, so we did talk about solutions. Missy Forbes from Forests is going to come up unless there are other questions for me. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me. So these, again, are the partners.
So these, again, are the partners involved in the Wage Enhancement Program, and I will just kind of walk you all through what we're doing. What we want to do is we want to give $2 an hour to qualifying employees on top of what they already make. So we kind of broke down the numbers, and it's around a 17% raise. So if you all can imagine what that looks like, if you were to get a 17% raise, we're hoping that it has a lot of impact to the low-wage earners that are working in these programs. These are the requirements for who qualifies, and I won't read through all of them, but, you know, Lori talked about quality, and that's what we want to see centers that are participating in those quality rating systems so that the kids that they're working with have exposure to the quality. The hourly minimum wage is no less than the county that's set forth. And then, as Lori talked about, that not maintaining that 20% cap. We also really want to make sure that the centers are also taking CCA at the lower, the zero. The infant care is hard to sometimes get, take CCA for that. So we really want to focus on those programs that are really intentionally taking childcare assistance. And then, I don't know if I go to the next one, the staff. So we are looking for those teacher, classroom teachers that are working full-time, at least 32 hours a week, and that are year-round employees. Consistency of care is really important also, and that they earn less than $23 an hour. And again, that's a classroom teacher, an assistant, a floater, somebody who's consistently working in a classroom at that 32 and up per hour, or, excuse me, per week rate. And then I'm going to turn it over to Shelley to break down the rest of the info.
Thank you. Hello, good afternoon. I'm Shelley Mahary.
Welcome.
From the Community Foundation of Johnson County. How the collaboration will really work is we're really wanting Johnson County to really lean into the importance that childcare plays in our economy. We are wanting to invite investment from City of Iowa City and Johnson County to provide seed money of an investment of $250,000 per year to the fund that operates the Childcare Solutions Program for three years, which totals $750,000. We're also reaching out to the business community, knowing that a vital workforce depends directly on quality childcare being available in our community. That investment is $150 per year per employee to sponsor the program for their community. And this is also part of the work of the Better Together 2030 program, which serves as the liaison to the business community. The Community Foundation of Johnson County will hold a fund for this work, and I'll explain a little bit more of that in just a moment. But contributions that the business community do make to this fund could be charitable in nature to them, since this is a program that's supporting the work all across Johnson County. And the fund is also under the overall umbrella of Better Together 2030. We have several funds that we are holding at the Community Foundation, really aligning lots of good strategy, lots of good work, under the umbrella of Better Together 2030. Johnson County Social Services will be working with the providers to pay the supplemental wages to the employees, and our good partners at ForSEES of Johnson County will work with the childcare centers and in-home providers to educate them about the program and get them on board. So just a quick note about the fund at the Community Foundation of Johnson County. It is a fund that can take in both public funds and private funds to be used specifically for this program. If there was ever a requirement that funds, say, for Iowa City, funds given in Iowa City are held separately and accounted for separately, we could certainly accomplish that. We act as a third-party fiduciary, so we oversee the funds and make sure that the monies going out of the funds are used only in the manner that was intended by the fund. And there's a little bit of language there for you to have as well, just about how the agreement was written up for the fund. The intended fund is really expected to be long-term. We want to lean into the importance of childcare in Johnson County, not only for just this Wage Enhancement Program, but thinking strategically long-term about how we can impact that sector and elevate it as much as we can.
I have one question. The last slide, I think you said Johnson County Social Services will distribute the funds. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Will it go directly to the childcare provider, the staff, or will it go to the center?
So, from the Community Foundation's fund, it would go to Johnson County. From there, it'll be distributed directly to the centers. Well, actually, to the individual, to the centers, yes.
To the centers, great, thanks. That was it.
Great. And with that, I get to turn it over to our fearless leader of Better Together 2030, Katie Gurlock.
Great. Welcome.
Thanks for having us. So as Shelley mentioned, we entered into the agreement with the Community Foundation opening the Childcare Coalition Charitable Giving Fund, and the goal would be that it has a broad intent to serve all of the childcare goals outlined in the Better Together all envisioned, but this is a great first project to kick us off. We are undergoing a fundraising campaign with private employers. So we're asking employers to contribute to the program at a rate of $150 per employee annually to the fund. So we've got seven employers committed, including one large employer, and it's tax-deductible to employers, so that's a benefit of private business making contributions. The one downfall I would say we have in Johnson County, so this program's working really well in Hamilton County, we have a lot of nonprofit employers, so they can't necessarily take advantage of the tax deduction, but that hasn't stopped all of our investors so far, and we know that we're going to continue to grow interest in the program. We also know that this is an incredible need throughout workforce issues that come up. The Business Partnership and Iowa City Area Development are consistently hearing about workforce issues across the county, and childcare is one of those issues that continues to rise to the top of workforce. So we have a beautiful spreadsheet designed by Jaclyn from the City of Iowa City, and this isn't one that you can, that we can manipulate here, but we do have a spreadsheet that she's created for us with different formulas so we can do some targeting and projections. And so the way that I froze this one is that 135 childcare employees, just a best estimate at the first year, and that would be an annual cost of $513,000 for the program. So that would assume that the employee would work 35 hours per week, and then we would calculate the total supplement at $2 per hour, but then we would also include FICA. So we're contributing .153 for every $2 spent, and that means that there's no cost to the employer to participate in the program. The Community Foundation fee with Better Together projects, the administration fees have been cut in half by the Community Foundation, and so that's an incredible contribution of that group. And so based on the amount in the fund, that's what that is. So if it's 265,000 in there, then we're going to pay $3,000 in administration fees. And right now, the county has not assessed any or made any determination that they would need to have any funding to administer this program. Of course, we want it to be incredibly successful and grow to the point where they will need staff to operate it, but at this point, they have current staffing to be able to do so. Looking at the financial stability of this program and future planning, we're hoping to launch this program this year. It's, we've already received our first applications. We have secured county funding, and we also have empowerment funds, so we'd like to get this going. We know that there's an urgency to this issue, and so we are reviewing the first applications starting next week. So we're hoping to get the City of Iowa City's funds as well. We'll expend the EC Iowa funds, and depending on the ARPA procedures per municipality, I know Johnson County and Iowa City each have different procedures for their ARPA funds, we can determine how to segregate those funds and operate those. We'd like to have the City of Iowa City's funds deposited at the Community Foundation to continue to grow so that we can continue to invest and grow this whole solutions fund. We're hoping that the initial pilot year in 2024, we're going to see success. Part of the participation in the program requires data, so each childcare center has to report back, and we're going to have incredible data to report annually, and we'll have very specific data. So the employees have waivers, the centers have waivers, and we'll be able to really see the metrics and be able to report on the outcomes of this program. We'll continue fundraising with private businesses into the fund, which should grow our investments and returns, hoping the market improves. We know that program data collection will continue, and in 2026, we know that all ARPA funds need to be expended, and by then, we're hoping that we have such an annual investment from the private business community, including the City of Iowa City as an employer at that point, the county as an employer, University of Iowa as an employer. We will have those funds needed to be able to continue to operate this program. But we know in 2027 and beyond and towards 2030, Johnson County will lead the region and the country in childcare investment initiatives. So I can answer any questions you have, or we can, Jenny's going to come up and conclude for us, and then we'd be happy to answer any ongoing questions.
I have one question. Sorry, Katie. I have a question about the 250,000 per year for three years, the ARPA funds, which I completely get. Is that representative of the employees, or is this a separate? I guess I'm just thinking of a mechanism of, is this representing like the 150 per employee for the city?
No.
That's the sustainability piece?
We'll be back in 2026 for that.
Okay. So this is just?
Under that metric, our contribution would be lower.
Okay.
Yeah. This is just recognizing that we have ARPA funds, and we've established childcare as one of our ARPA priorities.
And then I have one other question, and it may be, you're fine to say, let's hold that, and it can be later. It seems to me that definitely this program is to incentivize retention above and be all, and to help professionalize the profession, really pay them what they're worth, and this is a really good start. Has there been discussion in looking at it maybe through the 2030 lens of growing the pipeline so that it can actually be incentivizing people to get into the profession and to help with the training that I know was sort of brought in early on to talk about measures that have happened? Because it seems like we're still stuck with those slots. There's a gap, even if we haven't gotten, even if we're helping those who are still in the profession to be able to, but, so is that kind of part of the conversation too?
Yeah, I can let Missy and Jenny speak more to that, but that's also continued work as part of the Coalition. ForSEES has also worked with Kirkwood to develop a program. And again, starting with, this starting with centers, but we want to expand this to in-home providers as well as the program continues to grow. We want to continue to expand it across the childcare workforce, and so we just need to pilot it this year and see how the centers are because it's easier to operate on the, kind of, track the data that way. But this will continue to grow, and I know that all of our partners in this coalition are continuing to work on upskilling in childcare as a profession and growing that industry. But recruiting people into that industry, there's even a high school program that they've been working on. Wages continue to come up as the reason, and so this was our first primary goal to kind of launch into that, and we're really hopeful that it'll work. You know, said another way, if we need $500,000 to run this program annually for 135 employees, that's only 3,500 employees in Johnson County that we need to get employers to contribute $150 for annually, and that's a very doable goal. I think we can even do beyond that and grow the program.
My question is actually, I think, a good piggyback off of that particular statement. You mentioned that you had seven employers that were bought into this. How many employee contributions are they, between those seven employers, do you have?
So total, that would be 46.
46, okay.
But the large employer is not included in them.
Gotcha. The other question I have is kind of just a contingency question, I suppose. So I'm thinking about a variety of situations that providers could be looking at with this program being introduced, and I'm wondering if you guys have thought about, okay, so how are we going to prevent, you know, bad actors from benefiting from this program in a not-good way, right? If a company is already paying out $2 over that 11, what was it, 16 or something like that, per hour, the recommended Johnson County minimum wage, and they decide to cut back $2 in order to receive a $2 increase in wages, do you have anything to prevent that, or what is your plan for that?
I'm really fun to have meetings with. You should see these waivers that people are signing. So there's a lot of requirements on the participants and the centers both. So, you know, we're really contracting with the centers, but we thought it was important that the staff really also understand the obligations of participating in the program and to also hold their employers accountable and have kind of a cycle there. So the staff are actually completing applications and waivers as well, so they understand what their starting wage is at and what it should be, and they're also going to be able to hold their employers accountable. But the data that we're collecting will allow social services staff to ensure that that doesn't happen.
Awesome, thank you.
I'll elaborate on that. That's a very good question. So for reimbursement, centers will submit payroll information for each employee they're seeking reimbursement on. So we'll have where their wage is at, when they started, and then with the $2 wage increase. So we'll have documentation, and that will be required before they can receive reimbursement. So that'll be part of the monthly reimbursement request.
When they start with the company or when they're starting with the program?
When they're starting the program. So we'll have their base wage, and we set the base wage that they, because we know some centers are already further ahead than others. They've raised wages, others are playing catch-up, but we set that their base wage, starting the program, had to be a minimum of the county recommended minimum wage at $11.56 an hour. So that way, it's an equal playing field. Everybody has to be there to start out at a minimum. If they're already paying more than that, that's great. Then, this program is not intended to backfill the wages that have already been established at centers. This is intended to be supplemental in addition, and that was quite intentional. There's a number of programs. So we replicated and borrowed ideas from other areas, Hamilton County, as Katie had mentioned. But one thing that's different about our program versus theirs, those programs are reimbursement based on bonus that's paid out like on a quarterly basis. So for a lot of employees, though the bonus is nice, a lot of them don't tie that to their wages because they don't see it immediately. So for us, it was really critical that we tied this wage enhancement to their actual wage, so they saw it in their paycheck each pay period. And so we're able to track that. Centers, if they have a hard time maybe fronting the money, then instead of requesting reimbursement on a monthly basis, they're able to do that after each pay period. We're leaving that up to the centers, what's best for them. So we should have that covered since they'll be submitting their payroll information. We have a lot of experience at the county through the Social Services Department in terms of grants management. We allocate a number of grants, and so tracking payroll and reimbursing for employee wages is not new for us.
Yeah. So I guess I just want to make something clear here. My comments here are not in any way signaling any kind of stance against this. I just do think it is kind of an important thing to consider. And I guess my concern is, if we're only tracking the payroll data from the start of the program and not prior to the start of the program, how would you know if the company has decided to cut back wages and use it as a backfill?
The application specifically says that, and both the center and the staff member are certifying that. And we also have the data collected from those centers that Lori has luminous records of.
Awesome.
Yes, we have that pilot part. When we first did the very first, we have each center and what their starting wages for each one, so we can compare back to what they told us in September and ensure that that's.
Awesome, thank you.
And also, the process for this is that each center will apply. So we've received six applications so far. We just opened it up, seven now. So once we go through that, identify eligible centers, and then they receive notification that they're eligible, then they'll be invited to have their eligible staff members, those that are eligible or working 32 hours or more a week, then they can too submit an application, and they'll all come through the center. That application includes the individual's wage, so the employee themselves is writing down their current wage prior to the wage enhancement.
We'll let Jenny come up and close out, and then all of us are available for questions.
Thank you.
So, thank you for those questions. It's almost as if you crawled inside of our brains, and we have been meeting weekly to discuss this, and we have
And we have just thrown every scenario out there and tried to figure out how to break this. So we always encourage questions like that because it just makes it a better product at the end. So as we talked about at the very beginning, our goal is to increase access to affordable, high-quality, high-quality, high-quality childcare. And so we feel very confident that addressing the childcare workforce shortage is one of the many important steps that we're going to need to take to get there. As you mentioned, I think we talked a little bit earlier about building the workforce pipeline is that first step. And we have really been focusing on that for a few years now. But, you know, we know that primarily women are in this childcare workforce. And if we're only paying them $23,000 a year, it doesn't feel good for me as a woman to not really tackle this wage issue for women who are in this workforce. So this has been, you know, kind of a passion project for all of us and, you know, we really need to address these, these wages. So by encouraging more people to enter into that workforce, we're hoping that we can provide that living wage for folks and we believe that that will help us increase access and improve quality. And so one of the things you also asked about is, you know, building that pipeline. I'm also on the state Early Childhood Iowa Board and we just discussed in our last board meeting last week, all of the different funding sources that are being pushed into that pipeline development. So they're going to now fund statewide teach program and we can tell you all about that, but it's funding for childcare training. So I am always on the lookout for those dollars at the state level and the federal level and how can we bring those back into our community to really support childcare? So I just want to also end, I was just saying this the other day, childcare really is a win-win-win. So if you figure out how to increase access to childcare and how to increase wages, you are providing stable childcare for working parents. You are providing workers for our area employers who are not having to leave because of interruptions in childcare or leave after they've had their second baby because they can't afford it anymore. You're providing our workers with a living wage that they can feel good about and they can feel like they're in a profession that is valued in our community. And then lastly, as we all know, and I think there's nobody in here that would argue with this, our children deserve this. They deserve high-quality childcare and a safe place to be and not, you know, in situations that are less than ideal. So with that, I just want to remind you, this, this $2 an hour increase equates to a 17% raise and that means 4,160 extra dollars a year. That's not a lot. I would like it to be $10 an hour, but we're starting here and I just hope that we can commit to this as a community, not just government, but also the business community investing in this. And I think that that is the beauty of this model. So our whole community is going to get involved. So I appreciate your time and encourage your questions.
I have a few. Thank you, everyone, for all your work on this. And the, I think this, what you presented today really shows how much thought and effort that you've put into it. So thank you. My first question is just relating to the conversations that you maybe have had with employers and getting those on board. And what has been successful? If you've had enough conversations to kind of have a sense of what really helps them buy in to participation in this?
Yes. So as we alluded to earlier, our employers are really struggling for workforce. And I know I've had multiple conversations in my past role at the Business Partnership. I spent a lot of time with employers that were really wanting to grow their business, but they couldn't because they couldn't find employees or their favorite, best employee had to quit because they had a second baby or stories like that. So when we go in and we talk about this, they are really interested and they like this public-private partnership model because they know they need to do something. And a lot of times I get phone calls, I'm going to start a childcare center in my business. Okay, well, that's problematic. That's not just easy. You don't just, you know, put out some cots and, you know, bring in the kids, right? So this is an option for them that is really something that they can pay into and it's for the betterment of the workforce that are located right here in Johnson County. I will tell you that I was asked to come up to Cedar Rapids to participate in a conversation with their business community. They're looking at this model. I've gotten multiple phone calls from other communities that are interested. They saw in the DI or they saw, you know, an article about this and they're really interested in figuring this out for their communities too. So I think, again, we're, we're leading in this. So some of the challenges that our employers are facing when thinking about investing in this, does it come out of the HR budget? Does it come out of the foundation? Does it come out of, you know, where does the money come from? So those are some of the conversations that we talk about. The other thing that our community has a large number of nonprofits. So, you know, again, as our, you know, state legislature kind of cuts the budgets for our major employer in town, it's a little bit harder for them to justify paying into this program. But we're continuing to meet with those employers and they're very excited about this. We've just started and we've already got seven plus this one large employer locally that have invested. We have multiple meetings set up down the road that I think people will be jumping in.
I have a quick question and piggyback off that, that maybe is for staff, which is as far as where the money can come from. Can we find some way for like the employee benefits levy to pay for this or just think about it? I, I realize that the, it looked like the scope would maybe be more closer to $100,000 than 250 on an ongoing basis. Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. And my, and my understanding would be that the ARPA contribution of 750 would be our three-year contribution. And then in year four, we would start the 150 or whatever that figure is at that time contribution, but we'll look at the levy.
Now, it may be a tougher question. With the time and care that you took in speaking with all of the different centers and providers and feedback and information that you received from them, and you mentioned Lisa Williams was involved in the, the coalition. So I imagine you're aware, we have a pending request, as do all the municipalities, to fund the wraparound services for four-year-old pre-K for the district, for the Iowa City Community School District. So do you have a sense, at our last work session, I'd ask the question of, you know, kind of what feedback they're getting from providers? And we'd ask that at the joint entities meeting as well and I'd hope maybe there'd been some additional conversations. But it sounds like from the district to providers, there's not much communication. So do you have a sense of how that program or that ask might impact kind of the landscape that we're talking about here?
Yeah, so there's, if the school district decides to bring four-year-old preschool into the district and provide wraparound care within the school district, that will be very problematic for our local childcare centers. As you saw up there, they make, they make, unfortunately, they make money on four-year-olds and they lose money on that newborn. So it has been a struggle to kind of find a middle ground that will work for both the, the school district and our childcare providers. And I'm sure with continued conversations that we will get there. So there are many models out there that we can look at that would address the issue of providing that, that wraparound care for the four-year-old from those childcare centers. Maybe bringing a school district employee into the center to provide the curriculum in the center. Maybe training one of the center directors to, to do the curriculum, the Iowa City School District curriculum within their center for them. So there's a lot of different models and Lisa and Matt, they're great partners. So we will, we'll find a solution, I think. And I just also want to make the comment that it doesn't have to be either or. This program actually will also help subsidize the wages of childcare centers that are providing that four-year-old preschool. And if the school district then chooses to use those centers for the wraparound care, we can still engage in that and this could be a really nice collaboration in that.
I just thought of another question. Could you talk more to the decision to, as I understand it, sort of exclude in-home services in more prioritized, larger centers? The, the reason I ask is I grew up with one in my home. My parents had a daycare up until 2010 or 11, right next to my bedroom. And so the, the initial thing that I think about is, okay, well, if we're raising the wages of folks that are working at larger, more well-established, you know, companies, it's going to make the, the talent pool for, you know, smaller companies that are out of people's homes a lot less desirable. And it might be much harder for those companies to simply exist or have talent. So I'm kind of wondering what your thoughts have been about, about that dynamic.
I think you must be listening in on our meetings because, yes, we had to start somewhere and we had to start where I think, you know, it was a, a decision we made where we can impact the most number of kids quickly. But that doesn't mean we're not going to do a quick. Once we get folks into this program and we have tested it and it's working, you, you probably noticed on one of our slides, the very next group that we're going to expand this to is in-home centers. But we, we need to do the research on what does that look like? Is it a yearly bonus? Is it a quarterly stipend? You know, so we decided to focus our energy on this to begin with, but that is coming. And we don't intend to disadvantage one type of childcare. We want to be able to serve all of them. These numbers are large and they kind of scared us when we first started talking about them. So we wanted to get, we wanted to get some experience under our belt with the childcare centers and then with a quick follow-up with the in-homes.
Can you, can you talk to me a little bit about how you've engaged with the, the in-home providers throughout this process of planning?
Well, I think from the very beginning, we've had folks on the coalition that are in-home providers and have gathered their feedback. We also work closely with CCRNR who represents all of the providers, registered or not, in Johnson County and the region. So we have gotten feedback directly from them on this coalition as well, too.
Excuse me. So you would be planning to do a survey of, of those in-home providers then? Because you, this other was focused on, on the big providers.
Yes, yes.
So you would do another survey of them to see how many.
Well, I don't want to speak for Johnson County.
I'd say too, that ForSE works really closely with in-home providers. And, you know, it's their own business, they're setting their own rates. And so we support them in other ways, not that, not with a $2 incentive, but in other ways that they, we kind of pick up some expenses as far as supplies and activities and things like that. So not that it's the same, but I think we're kind of picking up that lift a little bit right now and while we can focus on the centers and see how that goes. So if that's helpful.
All right. Thank you all so much for coming.
My last, I have one final question. What is your timeline? What is, what would be optimal for a decision?
As soon as we can get. So the funding is there from Johnson County. So we're, we're scoring applications on Monday and we're starting. We want Iowa City to be at the table as well. But we know that the problem is urgent and we need to, to get going. And this first quarter was our goal. And so we've, we've met our goal and we're going to, we're going to get going and we're just going to continue to build the coalition and build the fund with those that want to join.
Great. Last question. Thank you all for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Yes. Mayor, before you move on to the next item, I thought I'd just share a tentative plan, at least in my mind, and see if it's consistent with what you're thinking. So the presentation you had tonight followed the one from your last work session from the school district on the, on the four-year-old wraparound proposal. I, I think it would be a good idea to give yourself an opportunity to discuss both of those at the same time and how you want to move forward with, with one or either. So at your next work session, I was going to place an item with both the Wage Supplement Program and the Four-Year-Old Proposal from the school district on that. No presentation, just an opportunity for you to discuss. And if you're comfortable at that time, you can direct staff to move forward with one or the other or both. And if you decide that you've got questions that are unanswered that, that need to be resolved, we can invite either one of the groups back in for future discussions. Does it sound okay?
Yes.
One other item is that the charitable giving fund at the community foundation, the intent and the purpose is written broad enough as well that if you'd like to fund an early childhood initiative and that would include maybe the school district better together, we could help kind of shepherd those funds as well.
Thank you.
Jeff, how long will it take once the council gives direction to staff to get to the point of funding to the community foundation?
I, I think the ARPA agreement would be, I think we can move pretty expeditiously on that one. The, the school district would be the more complicated one because we need to talk about a revenue source for, for that particular one. But if, if there's, I mean, we've been, I've been working under the assumption that we're going to move forward with this Wage Supplement Program. It's been identified, childcare was identified as a, a priority early on in the ARPA process all the way back to 2021. And you all have really stressed partnerships and engagement. This seems like it checks those boxes very well. So we can begin to kind of sketch out now what that agreement looks like and be prepared to move forward should you give us that green light. Again, the school district one, just because we would not be using ARPA dollars, we'd have to come up with other revenue sources, is a bit more complicated and I'd say would take a little bit longer to, to tease out how exactly we're going to fund that in a sustainable way.
Thank you.
So we'll have it on our next work session and have that discussion. All right, we're going to move on to item number two. And that is the strategic, kind of a strategic plan action. Revamp in the neighborhood PIN grant program and evaluate discretionary funding for district neighborhood grassroots project. And. I think I'll start this one off, Mayor, if you don't mind. So in your information packet on March 2nd, you have a memo from Shannon McMahon and Amon Sharif. Both are here to join us this afternoon and are available for your questions. But this follows your strategic plan session in which you identified this as a priority. So the, the PIN grant program is essentially a grant program that has long lived at the city where we support neighborhood associations in pursuing whatever it is they may, they may deem important for their neighborhood. That could be beautification projects, it could be social gatherings and things of that nature. We've taken a, a kind of a, a relook at the program in, in relation to your strategic plan and the memo outlines how we'd like to change things. I'll also note that in the budget proposal before you, that you'll be considering in April, there is a $5,000 increase in the PIN grant program. So we'll have some extra funding there to support this effort. So I, in, in, looking at the time here, I won't go through the memo in detail unless that's what you'd like. And then again, Shannon and Amon are here to answer any questions you have about their work here. Well, I do think it's a great opportunity for people in our community that haven't accessed this PIN grant in the past. I, I do wonder how some of that information is going to just get maybe out to the community members, some of these newer neighborhood associations. So maybe if you all can elaborate on that. Because we know that if it's there, that's.
Because we know that if it's there, that's great, but how will the word kind of get out and about?
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Shannon McMahon. Aman and I have been talking about how we're going to roll this out a little bit differently in the past. One of the ways that we'd like to make sure that neighborhoods are aware of the PIN grant program and are able to participate is to help neighborhood associations by creating surveys for the residents and making sure those surveys get to the neighborhoods so people have a chance to weigh in on the options that they'd like to see in the PIN grants in their own neighborhoods. And that's one, I think, significant change that we've seen from the past.
And as far as, good afternoon, Aman, Sharif. And just to add to that, we've been organizing a series of regular neighborhood association meetings and stuff which will be used as a very good venue to connect to PIN grant processes and other things as well. So this would be like a main area that can relay information about the PIN grant as well.
Great. And welcome to both of you.
I just have a question actually about the timing of the awards. I see in here that it was, the funding would be made after, available after July 1st of 2023. And I realize that that actually kind of works well within this parameter of this cycle. But I was wondering if there's, I know many neighborhood associations or, or neighborhoods in general, that summertime and better weather tends to be when somebody, when they want to do their events. And at the same time, they could be awarded in July and they could keep those until the following June, right? And spend that money then. But a lot of times, especially if they're more nascent associations, they may not be thinking ahead almost 12 months. So I'm just wondering if like after this first run, there's the possibility of maybe moving that cycle back a little bit so that you would have the full summer and that they could be awarded that money maybe at the beginning of the summer so that they could expend that money a little bit more upfront?
That is certainly something that we can look at in the future. I think that we'd also like to look at aligning the timing with some other grants that the city has available so that we could maybe piggyback between them to help provide more substantial assistance.
Sure. And for what it's worth, this is me throwing spaghetti on the wall. So you can feel free to poke holes in it like and say, well, timing wise, that doesn't work. But that was what struck me when I was reading and I was like, I just know that kind of late spring and summer is when events are more desirable. So it just seemed that that might be something to look into.
I think that's also going to be helpful to have that discretionary funding available so that when something does pop up and we have an inactive neighborhood that would like to participate or have an event, that we may be able to help them out with that.
What's the, what does PIN grant stand for again?
Program for Improving Neighborhoods.
Okay, great. And is that just general fund money?
Yes, it is.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, I really like the discretionary piece as well. And I would imagine that once you have that in place, you may find, you know, sort of this demand and timeliness question may sort of work itself out. You see when people are coming with requests that, that hadn't, hadn't been funded in the larger, larger pot. I thought it was extremely helpful to see the gaps identified and the collaboration with like a, I define, you know, a city staff sort of sponsor or support person, I think, is really excellent to engage all the different, all the different departments and just, you know, the different places in the city where we have a little bit more distributed outreach efforts. So to make sure that they're communicating in terms of these opportunities and to the neighborhoods themselves. I like it.
Great. Looks like good planning. Time for this program to have that update and that sort of move on to its next step after experience and, and gained over the last several years. So, so thank you for doing the legwork on this.
Well, thanks to you both. Yes, all right. Any other discussion on this item by council? I, I guess we probably need to, you know, kind of signal any changes to the city manager's office if we're thinking any at this time?
I liked everything in the memo.
Okay.
And this, these expenditures are at a level that we have the authority to execute. So we don't, this isn't one of the grant programs that comes back to you or we ask you for those individual awards. Because it's part of your strategic plan, we'll report periodically to tell you how it's going and give you examples of the grants that we provide. But we don't need any formal action, Mayor, just as you suggested. If, if you like the track that we're on, we'll continue to move forward and report back at the appropriate intervals.
Okay. All right. Next item on our agenda is three, clarification of agenda items. I don't know that there's any. All right, we'll move on to four. Informational packet discussion. We'll start with February 23rd. We will move on to March 2nd. And we do have IP 5 that we need to discuss. And it's a memo, memo from our deputy city manager. So if, yeah, so this is a request for statements of interest for inclusive economic development support for underestimated businesses and entrepreneurs. So, yeah.
I'll just make a quick introduction on this one. It feels like we're, we're moving on the ARPA front pretty well here. We, we just heard the wonderful presentation on the wage supplement program. You will soon see the nonprofit capital grant program back before you. And this piece is one that I know staff is, is very excited about. It was the largest chunk of ARPA dollars that we identified through the public input process, and that's $4 million to support underestimated businesses and entrepreneurs in the community. So I'll let the deputy city manager, Redmond Jones, walk you through that memo and our thought process on that. And we welcome your input before we issue that publicly.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Had the pleasure to kind of talk about this. This has been one of the highly anticipated programs. Just the rumor of it has gotten a lot of excitement in the public and we've had a number of preliminary meetings in the buildup to this with members of the public in anticipation of this program. So it's really exciting to see this starting to come together. So as the city managers shared, I'm here to kind of discuss this request for statement of interest for the inclusive economic development support for underestimated businesses and entrepreneurs. Basically BIPOC business support. But our, one of our companies recently did, vendors recently did inclusive economic development plan and recommended that the language be changed to spur more interest in the community. So we've done that. So we're hoping is that this discussion that we're about to have would get the feedback from the council, give us any suggested changes and any process as we move forward. And, and hopefully we can move forward with this next step of the ARPA initiative, rolling this out. So if you can recall, back in 2021, the city council had identified several ARPA funding priorities and strategic investments. And one of those was BIPOC, BIPOC business support. And at that time, we identified $4 million. Staff has looked at and recommend that we expect to see capital interests as well as kind of human support, kind of soft interest might be things like lending programs and things of that nature. So we expect to see kind of two areas of, of proposals or, or concepts, I should say, that come in. And we want to be able to be flexible to handle all those different types of ideas. So we anticipate somewhere around $3 million going towards capitalized projects or things that lend themselves, maybe rehab programs, brick and mortar, maybe even land purchase, things of those natures. And others are maybe more the human aspect of supporting services to help give businesses the abilities to be successful. So we're kind of looking at it that way. Obviously, it depends on what we get in and it can change that. And, and we'll, you know, want to have a process that'll be flexible to be able to adjust the diversity of those type of, of suggestions and concepts. So that's why the, the concept of requesting for statements of interest is appealing because it provides that flexibility as well as gives us a really kind of low barrier to, to entry, gives us the ability, so if there are things or gaps that are missing, that staff can work with those organizations out there to help refine those proposals so that when we do bring them back to city council, they, they'll, they'll be more aligned with being successful should council agree to supporting those. So I just wanted to also kind of capture some of the, the high-level aspects since this is so well anticipated that the folks tuning in to Channel 4 will be able to kind of get an idea of what we're looking at. So looking at the eligibility first, we're, we're kind of looking at nonprofit and profit organizations. We're trying to be as flexible as possible for all those different types of, of business type of entities that are interested in supporting these businesses. We're also focused on city-based organizations and they must be the lead applicant in those, but they're, but they don't. We're also encouraging partnerships and partnerships can come from outside of communities. Could be Corville, could be folks that are, are doing the same type of initiatives in other communities, but we wanted to have a focus in Iowa City. So as long as there's a lead, a partner that is Iowa City-based, we want to see, we want to see those concepts as well. Physical space proposals, obviously we would want, want that to be located in Iowa City. So we do have, have that. And we're proposing organizations must have demonstrated some ability. But at the same time, we don't want, if there's a brand-new organization or something that is a new concept that haven't had that experience, staff still wants to sit down with them and help build them and probably provide some technical assistance depending on what those proposals are to help them fill those kind of gaps. Maybe even suggest other partners that might be also in the community that can help them fill those gaps to be successful. So that kind of gives us the ability to bring in all those ideas. I think what a statement of, of interest would look like. Obviously, we would like to have a cover letter, kind of explaining, a general description of, of what that concept is, the purpose, the benefit, the goals, what we're also very interested in and how is that going to build community? And this kind of goes in with some of the, the heart of the, the ARPA funding is kind of built around resiliency. What are those things is going to, you know, help the community become stronger by? And so should we run into another kind of community-wide emergency, then maybe we'll be a little bit more prepared to address it because communities knows how to rely on each other and be stronger, better together, right? So obviously, that's important. Preliminary timeline, the estimated budget, big picture things, looking for partnerships there, track record, statement of abilities and statement of work to date is also important. And any other information that is successful. So very, you know, it doesn't take a lot to pull that together. We just want to get those ideas in and be able to start the process of working with folks to kind of develop those into some hard proposals that can be brought forward. So I think that was everything. Is there any questions?
Well, I have to say, this is exciting. A long time coming, this proposal here. Johnson County Inclusive Economic Development Plan was, I would say, a real contributor to some of the information that we had to really pull this together. So thanks to everyone that participated in that and of course, to you and leading this effort as well. The request for statement of interest, my understanding, as you just mentioned, is it allows for flexibility on what projects are really out there. We don't totally know what all, what all the interests will be. And so that I, I do appreciate this allowing us to have some flexibility. In your memo, you mentioned that after those statements come in, there'll be a review committee. And I see that you stated that staff and maybe one or two city councillors could be a part of that. And so at some point, I think this council will have to discuss that. I do have interest in being a part of that. One of the, one of the questions that I do have is, did the Johnson County Inclusive Economic Development Plan, I don't fully remember it. I know that we had a, a presentation here. Did it kind of give us what the anticipated needs were? Only because I see that it said that we would expect, it's $4 million for the total award as well as being proposed. But we're expect to award $3 million towards capital needs in nature as well as one, and then $1 million towards programs, projects or other proposals aimed at business support services. And so not that you totally have to answer that, but do you have a rationale for why $3 million or $1 million is there with those separate categories?
Sure. So, so it, it did give us some, some ideas of, of what those type of needs could be. Things like a community kitchen, those are kind of expensive tags, right? So the brick and mortar, purchasing land, I think, you know, we know well that, that land is not cheap in Iowa City. So we anticipate that if those type of projects come, come presented to us, that they're going to need more of a infusion to get off, get off the ground. And, and we're still going to be looking for, you know, leveraging dollars as much as possible. And, and that's why we really made a real big point to push for partnerships. And it may even be that even partnerships that they haven't identified right now, there may be other partnerships that through this process, we can marry or, or at least start conversations amongst organizations to try and help those dollars go, you know, a little further. But obviously, support services are going to be just as important. And those are mostly, you know, people-driven. And so we, we anticipate maybe those might look like loan programs or things that might even be revolving where the resources can be used over and over, those kind of things. It's just hard to know exactly what we came in. And, and we have the ability to adjust based on what comes in. So obviously, if more support services concept come in than the brick and mortar, then, you know, we could change those, those numbers around.
And last question, I know I have councillors ready to respond, which is great. Leveraging, is there a little flexibility? Because we, I heard Mayor Protim just mention some of those timelines for some, for some programs, funding programs like our CW, our CDBG funds. You know, those application opportunities would be passed for this upcoming fiscal 24 year. So will there be some flexibility for people to leverage future money? Or is, do they have to spend the money kind of in a, in a quick go-around?
Well, I think we always have to keep our mind on the overall ARPA requirements of, of spending, which I think is in 2026, if I'm correct. And so we got to keep in mind on that. But I think the, the way that this is set up, there's probably going to be phases of, of aspects of, you know, projects, especially if it's something that might require some engineering or, or some architectural design or something like that. Obviously, you know, we, we want to probably have to work through, maybe even help them get the necessary professional assistance to get those kind of plans together. So, so there's probably, it's not going to just be a big rush, I don't think, you know, to go, you know, right out the door. But it also probably depends on, you know, what we're presented. Like a loan program may just be, hey, Like a loan program may just be, hey, we, we establish a loan reserve and we give that money out, and then that program starts running. So it just really kind of depends.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you open up the council discussion, could I make one brief comment about the vernacular? I would really encourage council members to adopt the vernacular of underestimated businesses that has been used here. As you can imagine, we don't want to be exclusionary based on any protected classes. You also probably saw in the memo that there are some references to the Iowa Targeted Small Business Program, which includes not only minority-owned businesses, but businesses that are owned by women or disabled veterans or others with disabilities. We would intend the program to be open to all of those groups, and of course, one of the considerations could be how much the applicant has been underestimated based on their classifications or characteristics and so forth. So I just want to encourage the adoption of that vernacular. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Eric, and, and thank you, Redmond. And kind of on, on those lines, as we know, Iowa City has become very diverse over the last few years, and, and the council and the city over the last few years have been requested many times for informational things that have gone out to be put out in multi-language is. Is that a possibility with this program to have information about it as well as the application process be submitted in, in other languages?
Absolutely, yeah. We've already kind of had some kind of conversations about that. What those languages are, we're still, you know, but yes, certainly.
Thank you.
And then is this deadline still 4:00 PM, May 1st, or is that just part of the draft?
So, so right now, we want to, you know, give about a month and a half for the, the request to be out there. We could, you know, depending on what the council wants to do, we could probably move pretty quickly on getting it out. And, and May 1st was, you know, is on a Monday and the 1st of the month, so it was a nice, good, clean date. But, you know, depending on if we need to do some more adjusting or whatever, we could, you know, just move that date accordingly.
I have a few questions. I had the benefit of being on the council subcommittee on the capital side, so I think I maybe had a little more transparency into some of the details behind the process. I just have some, a little more detailed questions, maybe. Do you have a sense of how and where, or how you decide how and where, like the publicizing and promoting and sending this out? I think we've all had conversations with people who we think we know are going to be interested, but what's the, sort of the, I don't know, intentional way that you intend to do that?
Well, we're getting so much interest, we definitely have a little bit of an email tree already, because, you know, actually, I had, I hadn't, didn't show, didn't give anything out yet, but I had two meetings just leading up to this one, just to say, it's coming, it's coming, and giving them some, some basics. So I, I think the word of mouth is going to be also a big piece, but we're definitely going to do our, our due diligence on the website, and, and I think there's probably a good case to do a little hand-delivering to some of the folks that I know have already expressed interest, and I know that they're also very interested in doing. So one of the interesting things, almost all the folks that show interest want others to be involved. Like, everyone says, I don't want to be the only one. So I, I think this is going to, you know, really get out there. So we'll, we'll really press for hard on, on getting that information out.
I would just emphasize the priority that I would personally place on some of those more hands-on interactions, especially with members of our immigrant community or folks that don't speak English. I think, like was mentioned either at last meeting or the meeting prior, sometimes those communities need a little bit more of a, of a hands-on touch and someone to look in the eyes to, to feel trusting and to also ask questions and better understand the information so that they can get the kind of outcome that we're looking for. So I would just, you know, emphasize the importance of that from me personally.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just in the draft of the actual request for statement of interest, on page two, there was a part that I, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding it, or maybe there's a word that needs to be added. Under the eligibility criteria on the fourth bullet, the second, second sentence says, "This is about proposing organizations must be able to demonstrate an organizational ability to manage significant grant and/or loan funds. This does not preclude organizations that do have said experience from applying." Should that be do not, or are we saying it's okay if you've gotten grants before?
I think that should be do not. I think that's a, just an oversight of that word.
Okay, thank you. Because I think the intent was to provide that technical assistance.
Right.
And like you were saying, maybe even connect them with other people who would have expertise. Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yep, great.
I love this. And like Laura, I was fortunate enough to be on the capital grants, but we were representing council on that. And so my questions are kind of coming from some of the things that cropped up from there. And I was wondering if in the LOI or, or in, in the ask that we have for, for the LOI, if there was a suggested, like, minimum and maximum ask? And if there's not, that's fine. I can imagine that there would be a significant number of, like, lower amounts on the one hand, right? So there would be a lot to go through, so I don't know if there was any sense of, you know, if it's a capital grant, you know, they ask sort of like, we want all $3 million, or we'd like $1 million, and it's sort of like, that's sort of where we're at. But I could see, because there is a lot of interest, I'm just wondering if, if, if any suggestions or any discussion by staff had been about minimums, and it may not be that that's where you want to go, and that's fine. I just was curious about that.
We, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, if you.
No, go ahead, because then mine's slightly.
I was just going to say, yeah, we, there has been a lot of conversation on that, and we, we suspect that we could get some things that might be like actual landscape business. I want a lawnmower to, to do that. And, and a lot of those kind of things, we, we're hoping will be the next stage of whatever bigger support service initiative is pulled together. So we're, we're going to still want to get those in, and this is where I think this process helps out, where we'll still be able to keep those, and if people are, are bigger initiatives that are going to be helping smaller businesses in the support services that can have an instant, you know, client base right there. Because people might be out there, it might not be appropriate for that type of small thing in, in this grant process at this point, but it might make total sense once whatever concept we get in and they're doing, say, small business loans, then we provide that money to provide that service to them, and they're instantly hooked in. So it kind of just, again, depends on what we get in.
In that vein, I just have a follow-up question, because it's kind of, it goes in there with sort of like having, being able to work as a connector essentially, and to maybe a, a match type of thing, like, oh, this is a, a larger entity that wants to bring in other businesses under its wing and partner. Does that count for startups? The thing that I was noting with some of the requirements were like, you know, if, if available, give us three years' worth of your, you know, your backup, right, of your, your bona fides. What if it's a startup? Is there room in here for someone who's saying, I have a business plan, but I don't have a business yet? Is that something that could be accounted for in here? Or is that, does that too sort of go into like, well, and let's see how we can partner you?
Well, it, it is, and so some of the, the language, we didn't go into it specifically, but we talked about the targeted small business program and working with companies to, or businesses or whatever, to help them through that process of certification. That's all within that program. So those startups, they go through that process, they kind of work through providing those kind of essential information, if not, if you don't have it, to help you build it up and become even somewhat some financial literacy aspects to help develop becoming a certified, you know, targeted small business. So although we're not requiring that, we are saying that we will help a business that needs that assistance go through that process.
I do have one more question, I'm sorry. I noted a good chunk of this, and it may be allotted in different ways depending on what the applications are, but are for like larger capital expenditures, right? The potential of brick and mortar, of building, building, getting land, etc. But one of the things that I noticed in the survey that came out from ASTIG, the number one problem that most of the underestimated businesses have is rent, right? And so is there a place for OpEx requests? Because it seems to me, if somebody can say, if I can lock in a long-term lease and not have to worry about that, then I can attend to my business without having to actually worry about getting the land, buying the thing, you know, all of that. So I'm just wondering, is that something also? Because I think that that goes so well into the data that ASTIG found.
Yeah, that's also in part of it, yeah.
Yeah, if I can maybe just elaborate and take a, take a step back and focus in on what we're looking for here, because this, as, as Redmond said, the, the stage at which an individual business may say, I need help with inventory, or rent, or marketing, whatever that is, that's probably one step removed from this one. So what we're looking at this one is, is kind of a, a framework, okay? So you've got two categories, the physical space. The physical space isn't really physical space for an individual business. We're talking about physical space for business hubs, collaboration spaces. So this could be a, a, a space that has a commercial kitchen and maybe vendor space for five or six retailers. Doesn't need to be defined who those retailers are right now, but you're creating a framework, and the idea is that individual businesses will come and go over time, but this system is there to help small businesses over the long haul. So that's the physical space piece. It's really looking at collaborative spaces, not spaces designed for an individual business in this moment in time. And then that second program are those business support programs. That's exactly what you're talking about. Maybe it's a program to help subsidize rent. Maybe it's a program that provides low-interest financing to acquire inventory, could be technical assistance. It's, it's contracting with an accounting firm to provide services, or a website designer to provide services to a group of businesses. So we're looking through this program to create systems and places for multiple businesses to benefit from. And then once those programs are executed, say we contract with organization X to run a, a revolving loan program, that's when individual businesses will apply. And we know that's going to be a little confusing out of the gate here, which is one of the different things that we're recommending that we do with this one compared to the nonprofit capital grant program, which was a little more straightforward, is an, is an open house. So after we issue this, we let it sit out for a week or two, and then we have an open house where we can work through some of those questions, whether it's an individual business saying, where do I fit in here? Or it's a larger organization that, that has questions about, you know, what's the minimum grant or maximum grant.
Thank you, that's really helpful, but thanks.
So I guess, next steps for the council at this point would be to kind of, you know, are there any recommendations of changes or any, or are we ready to say to the staff, thumbs up? Yes, I hear, no, sorry, and then?
And we will add to not.
Thanks.
Yes, with that one change, thank you, Councilor Burgess. And then, as, it would now be a good time for us to even identify who might be from the council, that would be the representative. So I see the memo says two, and I would, thank you. I, I want to be one of them. Anyone else have, has interest?
Interest, yes, but not like.
Yeah, the only thing I, I will say is, be, just know that whoever is on this, look at some of the organizations you're a part of that might apply. Make sure, you know, there's no conflict of interest, but other than that, who would like to be a part of this? Okay?
I mean, willing to, yeah. So would maybe this be something to sit on and think about until the next meeting? We're not going to start the review process tomorrow, so that may be something to.
I think the, the next meeting would probably be fine, but the councillor or councillors probably want to be a part of that open house, so you can hear some of those initial discussions too. We don't have that scheduled yet, so we could definitely put it after your next meeting.
Yep, all right. So we'll just have this, just identify those individuals that will be from the council representative. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
All right. We're going to bring up USG to give us some reports. And welcome to both of you.
Hi, council. So we just have four announcements here. Starting with election season is starting for USG, and then we're going to have our student elections open up March 27th through the 29th, and then a group of USG members are visiting the Capitol in Des Moines tomorrow.
Yeah, awesome. And then USG just passed a bill that would allow students to have mental health days, so that'll be enacted within the next semester. And then last Wednesday, multiple USG members attended the local high school organized walkout in protest of the current anti-LGBTQ legislation in the state legislature. Keaton and I were there, and we ran into Mayor Teague and multiple Johnson County supervisors, and so we just wanted to update you guys on that.
Thank you.
Thank you both, all right. And council, we'll save our updates on boards and assignments and commissions until our formal meeting. With that, we will be.
I was just gonna, go ahead, I was waiting to see what you were gonna say, what you were gonna say.
Yeah, we're gonna actually, yeah, we're gonna actually be adjourned.
Oh, so you don't want to come back to the council updates or assignments? You just do that at the end.
We'll do that as an end of the formal. It's included, thank you.
Sure, thank you.